Alrighty, good evening everyone. We'll go ahead and get started. It looks like we have everybody that we're going to have this evening. I will start with a roll call of council members to establish a forum. Laurel Hill Ward here, Yana Glender here, Kelsey Parker here, Vicki White here.
Brian Zinder's here.
Great. First, this is our school. May peace well here. May the rooms be full of contentment. May love abide here. Love of one another, love of our school, and love of life itself. Let us remember that as many hands fill the house, so many hearts fill the school. That'll bring us to item 1.4. Are there any agenda modifications? I think the only one that I have heard is that we will pull item 1.
Thank you.
Any additional items that needs to be tabled or formed or moved? Okay, and. To item 1.5, audience to address the council. And now, again, this is an opportunity to speak to items that are not on the agenda. Do we have any audience members who would like to address? Because to item 2, we consent agenda. And I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. True for me instead of you. I'll second that. Thank you Laurel for the motion and Vicki for the second. I will call for the vote.
Can I add a comment? It's Ryan that's new here. I would want him to know that you're sleeping on that list. You have to have Scott that he can pull it off that list.
Yes, thank you. Thank you Susan. I'm so used to like zip through. Yes, so consent agenda, the way the consent agenda does work is that those are items that. With most of these, like any of the track registers, kind of sales firms, those are items that are either reviewed at the finance committee level or they're just items that don't require any discussion that are either overnight field trips or employee. These are.
Right, whichever group, which needs to answer a question.
So, yeah, so if you ever have questions on the consent agenda, we don't, none of the items from the consent agenda are up for discussion. And so then during the.
Agenda modification.
Agenda modification, you request any items.
Then I do it.
So, yes, so because we hadn't addressed that, let's go ahead and go back to item 1.4 for agenda modification. If you have any items, then we'll go off to you. Let me know just which numbers and then we'll put those out.
I had probably very short questions on 2.3 and 6.
Okay, 2.3 and 2.6. Does anybody else have any items in like full consent agenda? Okay, then we will discuss items 2.1, vocal items 2.3 and 2.6 to the consent agenda and put them immediately following the consent agenda before the fact they've been worked. Okay, now with that modification, Laurel, would you still like to hold your motion for the remaining?
Yes.
Okay, and Vicki would you? I would. So we do have a motion in the second. For the consent agenda with the extraction of items 2.3 and 2.6, I will call for the vote. Laurel?
Aye.
Yana?
Aye.
Kelsey, aye.
Vicki?
Aye.
And Brian? Aye. Great, so then that'll take us to item 2.3, the credit card statement. Brian, did you have a question?
Yeah, I did. I just, first time I've seen any of these documents. And it was, it was surprising to me to see in one month we doubled our credit card debt from $7,000 to $40,000. Did that all the end of the year and it's just like, what happened there?
That's a great question. Yeah.
I really paid $70. But. Yeah. I think Maggie would be the best.
Yeah, so the reason this occurs and you'll see large, you'll see spikes throughout the year, but at the end of the year, we are scheduling professional development for teachers. So that includes oftentimes travel, lodging, paying for the, the actual training itself. You usually have to pay for it upfront. And then there's also end of year, our schoolwide Mercurius order that we do. That is for the upcoming school year. And that is usually around between $15,000 and $20,000 for that purchase. So those orders are coming in and they're being processed. There's also other non-mercurious items we're buying for teachers for fall. And then there are end of year things that we do, ceremonies, things that are little costs like that that come up. Trying to think of what else recently.
Same type of cash flow issue, is that why we didn't pay? Balance? I mean, because we like.
No, it's, it's not that. American Express has a weird, we're getting used to the way that they bill. So their statements, I have to actually go to the website and pull because if I wait for it to come in the mail, we're late every month. And so this is only, I think, the second or third month we've had bills from them. So we're getting into sort of a routine with when is the bill going to arrive? How long is it going to take accounts payable to process it? How long is it going to take me to process it? Because there's a lot of itemizing of those charges that has to be done. And then you have to code them for the right place in the budget. So there's all this really intricate detail work with the bill. So when you see it here, you're catching it mid-cycle. We haven't made a payment yet or maybe we have made us, we might have made a $7,000 payment on that already, but it's not going to show up here until next month. So it's always going to look like we're not paying our bill, but we actually are.
Maggie, yeah, because I think it's, I think it's for the means of a 30% interest rate. We do, we are showing $237 in interest charges.
We are.
So 30% is the fees. So we're not going to be able to pay it before the due date and avoid those charges. And that's going to. Get from.
And that was, so what you're looking at is charges from last month's bill and it wasn't paid on time, so.
Maggie, one thing, I had a credit card one time that came in. And I called the company and we said to adjust the timing for us so that it got paid in full. So, so I just might, there's that good catch by the way. You know, and, and the other thing I was going to say is, I don't know if it's any help, but we have, for our business, we have a business card, you know, that isn't used for personal expenses, but they send it to an itemized list. I mean, they're worried to get it every so once in a while where we can use voted, maybe not through a school accounting. You might ask them to, you know, if they can send it to you in a way that it's sorted.
They're sending it as, as each charge on a credit bill. So I can see what we're charging, but the work is, the work is on us to do that before we send it to our back office provider. It's not up to the company to do that. They send us the bill, it's all itemized on the bill, as you can see, I'll show you. You see all these expenses here? Those are all itemized, but that work on the side there is what they require I do. So they want to know exactly what was spent. And you can see that if you want to know where we're spending the money, it's all here in the bill for you guys to see every month. And so there are classroom supplies, facility supplies, graduation, professional development, field trip expenses, that's what I left out. There's a lot, a lot, a lot of field trips at the end of the school year. And we spend a lot of time setting those up and paying for them. So it is a, it's a lot. It's a lot of, it's a lot of.
It's difficult to see a spike.
Yep.
One other question, but it was in relation to. Just coming from parent council, I always felt like there was a pot of money that was available for classroom field trips to cover that. But now seeing it on a credit card.
We have a credit card so that it's not coming out of our general fund, our ATM, our actual bank account.
Yeah.
And so we're actually able to control a little bit more expenses in this way. What, before when we had just our bank card, it was, every time we would make a purchase like this, it'd just come out of our bank account. So this is, you know, somewhat helpful, but again, the interest rate, the payment.
To answer your question, that pot of money that you're referring to, for all of, all of the financials that are housed in the same bank account, they are segregated out via account. Yes, and so, yes, the, the expense is paid on the credit card, but then it is deducted from, yes. And so when, when this is paid, it comes out of the bank and that's where all this, this coding has to happen. Is that that then shows our back office accounting which line items from our accounts to, yeah. And so, yeah, that can use a lot of people because it's like, oh, I thought we had an account for that. No, it's actually one bank account that houses all of the money. And then just through, through the accounting and the budget is where they determine which line items are paid from.
Right.
It's all the same thing.
Cool, okay.
Yeah.
Those are all my budget.
Oh, that's great, that's great, great question. And I really want to encourage you, especially being a newer board member, but even, you know, absolutely are complacent if we're not asking questions when we have them. And so that, it's dangerous if you have a question, hold on to this. Please, please always ask. So.
You all have the option here.
And very good suggestion.
You can ask me questions anytime.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely. I was going to say that's good. Yeah, good, yeah. You don't have to wait.
My goodness.
Well, I'm glad. Never.
Hey, could somebody let Nick in to the meeting?
Thanks, thanks for having me do all the questions in the week.
Hang on.
Yeah, Maggie.
Someone.
Oh, yeah, the waiting.
Where is he? Oh, there he is.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Maggie.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep, well, if you mind just going down the fully is app. Or there, I had a question about the language on it because it's chaperones, choir field. So it's fairly unapprovable.
I'm struggling, sorry.
So.
There I am.
She is pretty ahead of.
Yeah, they're like a year ahead.
A year ahead. And so she's her.
Oops.
Are we?
Went down.
Is that all the way down? There he is, there she is.
And then keep, is that, is there the actual application?
It's somewhere in there.
Keep going, yeah.
There, yeah, right there. Fire TV.
Yeah.
Yeah, so. That, that's the issue, is she's trying to get reserved with space. She won't know since she's a new teacher. So I'm going to ask chaperone point. So the question is, so that list of chaperones is just incredible because once, okay, they would have people starting up and say, hi, what a chaperone. This, and so it became quite terrible. Anyway, so that's why we have the required, however, we're a year ahead. So we can improve it and then say, who's the chaperone?
It'd be like required 30 days.
And these chaperones are probably going to be drivers too, parent driver.
Probably, yeah. The usual ways. That way she can reserve the room and still.
The small form.
They're going to go to Angel's Island also? Oh my God. On point raised to Angel Island. Because we do see that.
Well, in light of last year's, I really love the intent form, but then I feel I'm seeing the truth.
Yeah, no, I, I agree with Brian. It's probably worthwhile to have a change to that because really, we're not reviewing to ensure they have insurance in and things like that. We as a charter council aren't approving which chaperones are the administrative function. I think we probably don't need that for our purposes, but the office would need it for their. So maybe updating the form to be a two-part sort of thing like the, so that we can have teachers getting, because some of these field trips, we've seen that prior, is some of these field trips, Brian, they need to be approved well before.
Yeah, I would imagine.
Well, before even the, like, all of the little details are in there for parenting to know if they could for sure come or not, you know. And so. So we want to make that available, I think. And it is an administrative function for chaperones who are on the trip. Now, it's every company's function, and we love that.
Really, this form exists for us to be able to.
Well, it's also a, any overnight group of words, one day doesn't.
Oh, it's beyond.
There's a certain level of, of requirement and that insurance risks that you're taking this any night, so you need to know it.
Cool.
I'm looking at like, is, is this in line with, you know, education and things like that as part of our. Or kind of, you know, the law or tradition or that sort of thing. Yeah, which even that, I mean, depending on if it's 30 field trip, that is potentially even looking at, does it make sense?
That was my only question.
Oh, great question. Great. Does anybody else have questions about overnight field trip? So we're going to approve it, not approve it pending.
I would say with a stipulation that the, the chaperones are needed at least 30 days. I was saying prior to that.
Okay.
I would add that stipulation.
Needs to be.
Or just because things can happen, maybe something about the, the chaperones have been through the appropriate screening or vetting. Because, you know, I can see you getting in a position where you had to have somebody and they only had a week notice because somebody else had a family notice or something. So really, it's about whether they qualify or not.
And have we thought early about, do we have volunteers? Are we free, do we have, we, it's really sort of not rushing around if we. Right, because we might have, sometimes we are anyway, but we.
I have to cancel, so I have to cancel the morning of the shady creek ride because I work up to a burning gun. I think, yeah, so. You can, instead of putting a tiny iron, we could potentially do a motion to prove that the stipulation that the chaperone list is approved by an entire field trip. Yeah. Because the administrative policy is that they have to have their license and they have, you know, they have to have certain days in place. So as long as, even if it's a last minute day of this S thing that they have to have them 60 days out, then they'd be violating that if they had to have a last minute switch. But it is the responsibility of administration to ensure that any chaperones are allowed to be.
I think it, it could disrupt things for us in case you're at some publicized. Chaperones, you know, I mean. Correct procedure. I, it's.
Can I agree with all this? I like the idea of alternate, especially if there's more volunteers than there are drivers. I was personally an alternate once and a family member of a driver. Their, their mom ended up in the hospital. I ended up driving to work, you know, and you don't want to be far short, you know. Yeah, so I think the alternate thing, especially when you're playing that far out, because sometimes it's not the driver, but maybe they're responsible for a family member. Yes. Okay. Alrighty, well, before we get too much more of the leads on this outside of our review, we can move forward if somebody would like to make options. We do, are looking at things relations on item 2.6, so we'll ask maybe a separate motion. If somebody would like to make a motion to item 2.3, the credit card statement.
Credit card statement.
Laurel, do you have a second? I'll second. Thank you. From?
Aye.
Yana? Aye. Kelsey, aye. Vicki? Aye. Item 2.6, if somebody would like to move along with the. And then we are approved of the overnight. The point raised pending chaperones and directors approved by item 2. Thank you, Vicki. Do you have a second?
Aye. Second.
Thank you Laurel for this.
My vote as well.
And sorry Laurel, your vote?
Laurel, aye.
Yana? Aye. Kelsey, aye. Vicki? Aye. Brian?
Aye.
All right, great. And that will take us to item 3.1, our faculty's summer report. Great report, hopefully some faculty summer, summer report.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, barely. Maggie, can you?
Are you following?
Yeah. Uh, sorry.
The arrow right next to the mute. Yep.
Oh, left, left.
All right, last.
Oh, that's.
The arrow. Well, I take care of the note. Use sonic. Going down.
One more down.
Thank you so much, everyone.
Somebody talk to us.
Can I give them another try?
Hello.
Yay.
Thanks Maggie. And I don't know if, if Nick is muted as well, but hi, this is Sarah. If you don't know me, I will be a sixth grade teacher next year. And gosh, summer report from the people I've talked to, they're all just kind of unwinding, relaxing. You know, some of us have picked up our computers. We can't get into the building yet because the carpets are being cleaned, which is wonderful. So a lot of people just sort of are taking June to rest. Some of us have training at the end of this month. I know I have training next week. And then we'll start kind of buzzing back into the school throughout July and obviously August. But that's as far as I know what people are doing.
So thanks Sarah. Nick, do you have anything to add?
I do not. Great job Sarah.
Trying to turn off the brain, but it's not easy.
Oh, that's good. I'm glad you guys are getting some much needed and earned relaxation. Thank you both. Yeah. Thank you. All right, does anybody have any questions for Nick or Sarah? Taking them from the audience, thank you so much for coming. All right, let's move right along. Item 4.1, finance committee. Chris was not here, Susan, can you give us any big ticket updates that aren't elsewhere on the?
So, yeah, I went back and double checked the agenda, realized that Chris wasn't here and I think we're covering everything.
Okay, so we've got a pretty robust this agenda tonight.
That we, we otherwise have, that we talked about in finance.
Great, well then if you could just kind of report on each of the things as we get to the items, if there was any feedback. Okay, does anybody have any questions for Susan about finance committee in general? Otherwise, she'll chime in on each of the finance items.
Yeah, I do have one question.
Yeah.
Moving the time, okay. At one point.
We had a survey of parenting, just responses. So that's sort of where we are. And that's what we, where we have come. We have talked pretty easily about moving back to five. If that would be workable, it moves much more than that, it seems to be hard. Sure. So far, that's fine.
All right. I'll take us to the parent council report and since Kristen is also not here. Do you attend the parent council meeting?
Yeah.
Ryan, I know you.
There, there's not been a parent council meeting since last.
Great, so. All right, well, that makes that easy. And we'll take us to facilities, item 4.3, we have facilities.
Just the, right, that's definitely status, what I reported to finance. And so we have moved away from developing the new site, the conflict in the community continued. And the size of the property is small, so did not seem to be the best move forward. Cressa, which is the real estate company that we've been working in, has given us new sites and two of them promising. And I also met with them today along with, I've met now with two and Thursday we'll meet three other potential funding organizations for the process, so I'm working on that.
Funding, like instead of.
Yes, so Charter Impact let me know last month that they are getting out of funding charges. Only us, others in the, in the area. They decided that their funding formula, I'm asking to like use their words, didn't really fit well with our school. So they're, they do hospitals and other real estate things, so they're going to focus on that. And they said, you have a month, if you're ready for the project in a month, we'll do it for you. Be ready in a month, so. So we are interviewing other partners available right now. So, so far I've had, we reached out through, through our support, through Charter Impact or through Cressa. And then we are writing a letter to Chico Unified to request that we be included in their facility plan. Um, and then we are writing a letter to Chico Unified to request that, um, we be included in their facility plan also. Um, that will include the need to do a property nine request this fall. Um, and that will also, could also make some changes in talking to the funders and planners. It may also make changes in our costs, um, if we're actually on property that, that, uh, the school district, um, owns, then some of the other options we have through SB seven forty would make loops. So, um, that's, so we, but still, um, it feels strong and sound for go ahead and ask the district considering. And then our move date right now is July twenty twenty five. We do have on our current lease, uh, John Roth reminded me, from Cressa reminded me, we can have options to do extended even further if we need to. Um, but that's what we.
So just a couple of questions about that. Um, you know, Marsh is there, uh, near, near a park. And I'm wondering if Nurya Park, you know, it, it's the walkable community, that whole concept, if they have any, uh, idea or interest in, or take eight school, throw that out. I mean.
We did new challenge to them a couple of years ago and at the time they were not interested, but, um, John will be doing a new assessment of the full, um, area again, so he'll probably be asking.
And then the other, the other question I would have, um, and, and I, I mean this very respectfully, but because some parents have very, very strong feelings about the location, are, are any of them, I mean, could they be actively engaged in trying to help identify, um, do a better site, you know, you know, sometimes if the people don't like one thing and maybe.
We do have an established facilities committee. It does not met. I, if that, but there, there are nine parents of many.
Wow.
Who has requested to be on it, has invited to be on it. Um, so.
Best attended committee we've got.
Yeah, well, I don't know. Never met.
The best list. Have you never had mine, or sign up for any other committee, me or not me?
Oh.
But so.
So there's a lot of interest. We would go with that. I mean, both people that liked the past property and did. Yeah, um, I think that we'll start with that. But just look at the four properties. He has looked at, he has two that are, he feels are reasonable to move forward to discuss. And, um, then of course John is looking again at, at other potential properties as well.
We'll say, I think it's, I think that a one.
So it may come in, it's split, so many things, um, they, you know, real estate is ever flowing, so.
Yes, it is.
Are you able to share what makes those two, what about?
Um, the two, um, the size, the cost and the location are two of the better ones.
Oh, cool. As far as finding a replacement for Turner, you know, I know, I feel like I really interested in, uh, business model. Is that we will, will we pursue replacements that do that same, we fund it, then we kind of, you know, lease it or sell it to you.
Um, that's what we're looking for.
Yeah.
We're also.
Because we still kind of, we still believe that is primary.
Yeah, um, it, it's that they build it, then we buy it from them, um, makes it, so we don't have to.
Lease back?
Yeah, well, that's not what they call it, so I'm actually careful with my language, but it's similar to that. Um, with SB seven forty funding, we can, we can continue to use that funding towards this project. If we go other ways, we might lose that. So there's, there's that. So, um, yeah, so we're looking at that same model and two of the three of, uh, right now have that.
Well, I know that we've talked about this before, but I can't, if I might remember a clear answer to that. What, why hasn't the committee, this great nine member? Haven't they met a year ago and for every month for the last year?
I'm, I'm not, um.
Like, what is stopping this thing?
It is probably simply the work of, uh, primary in charge of it.
Is, is the people's body.
That the people's body, right now he's.
Okay, which is probably higher priority.
Well, and I don't, yeah, it just takes that. I don't like this.
Like that really awesome nine people.
Being involved early on.
It'd be essential to, they do understand aspects of the closed session in a real estate wheel to protect the costs and so on and so forth. That it, that is, I know that was one of the concerns expressed, but it's not a typical or unnecessary reports to be in closed session party.
Right. But I think, I think meeting and discussing potential sites, um, by our facilities committee and then working out financial.
Absolutely.
Give them the info, they're just gonna be so.
About why they're sure.
But I think that confusion is completely addressed. That should be.
Yeah.
Right.
Right.
Cause then you just.
Then you just ask. That committee does a certain amount and then the more legal stuff. And it's not being discussed. It doesn't feel like.
Yeah, I. Okay.
For the move.
I know, I was thinking about that, right? Okay, are there any other questions about the facilities meeting?
Oh, yeah, I had a question. What, when will we hear about these properties? You're, you're investigating, looking at owner and when will you be able to share them? It's exciting.
Yeah, um. Yeah, let me, yeah, let me, let John do his work as far as expanding. He's also looking at some, um, potential, as we talked about before, buildings that we would retrofit, um, as well, so. So let's get that done. Make up different properties that we want to bring to the facilities committee.
So a few months.
Yeah, my hope would be, you know, a few months. That's.
Um, drafted into, uh, this Chico Unified planning process. Kind of means a big shift from how we acquire.
Yeah.
Than if we can only entertain stuff that they can acquire.
Right.
Versus a company that's.
Right. The, the, the big change, Brian, in, in reality is, um, the, is the requirement as to, um, how we pay those who are. So if we have to do, what is it, um, going.
Purveying.
Purveying.
And also, but I'm putting in a Prop thirty nine, um, request or like drafting a letter to Chico Unified requesting to be included in their planning process. Um, that doesn't take away all of our power to work outside of that either, which is nice. We can put in that Prop thirty nine request. They could say, hey, we happen to have this campus that works great, kind of like with the timing and she goes into a school that is, which is Chico Unified campus. Their timing was just right, that was available when they, you know, they, they, they request, they accepted it. You don't have to accept it if you put it in. You also then like aren't tied that forever. And it, it just gives us an additional avenue to.
Yeah.
But the upside of that is like, for example, our, um, our bond, I mean, our regular grant. We have to use them on either, like, when we're looking at the building, we would purchase the property with those funds. And then technically, if we were to ever not be in operation anymore, that property would then be owned by Chico. And because of those funds, um, and so we were, we're kind of tied in with, we use those now if you're on a Chico Unified property, building or things like that, the district already owns it, so it is being in the district property. So there's, there's pros and cons to both.
Yeah.
And, and so that's kind of one of the things that constantly in. Someone, person was. Put in Prop thirty nine request before where they wanted to. campuses. Actually, they do and that's what is available and they work this. That was not, if it fit, we were able to. So, cool. Yep.
Great.
Yep. Okay, um, any other questions? Item four point four, and I was very happy to see, uh, four point one, a new applicant for community seed. Quite a resume. And, um, four point, four point two, this Laurel, excuse me. We. The community is coming available.
Well, Laurel is one of them, but she's.
Yes. No, but no, I am. I was just thinking, sure, because I was thinking that Laurel's term is coming up and she's rerunning the first thing.
Right.
And then.
And then.
So it's not, it didn't come down to the vote. We are stepped in.
You have to accept, yeah, accept their.
I was just making sure I wasn't missing anything or misunderstanding.
And our competition is over. And you said, there's, there was a vote, we would have had to, that would have been.
Right, but I was just.
Once, once it passed that.
But if we received three applications at the same time, then we would have to select. So I was just making sure we've got a two for two here. All right, um, so we'll start with four point, four point one, um, Donna Cressy. Right, an impressive candidate. Would anybody is. Now, see. Questions for her, but she is not here. Um, does anybody have any comments or observations from her resume?
That's, we're not looking, it's.
Sorry, I'll go up and look at.
Also, it was sixteen. Yeah, she's. Community member? Yeah, and tried it into the university and really community, which was great. Very solid.
Her name's South Meyer.
And so this would be, um, then is for starting at the August.
That's.
That's what's on my calendar, so I was making sure.
Uh, have to come with the August.
I plan on it. It's on my calendar.
Son in there, she said. She's retired.
Oh, that's a good time. She's considering reaching.
No, I did tell everyone.
Yeah.
Yeah, they reach out.
There's some voice, does she want to do a board? Or we need.
I think she might help with her.
All right, so stay on topic. Um, did anybody have any questions or thoughts? And now we are. We're not hearing. We were in a car.
I guess I do.
Oh, we were at that. I mean, obviously. She's been in the community for a while too.
Probably see her. In with this mother parent, it might be. No, when she started, uh, when she started with.
That was in fifteen, it looks like.
She was recruited by a parent.
Pardon me?
It was recruited by a parent.
Yeah, I saw that. Very nice.
I think it really, it's younger, yeah.
That's not what I would have. Put me back in. That block should reach.
I just think.
Yeah, as long as we don't pull both plugs again.
I guess keep going that.
It's not plugged in though. I can.
Get it better.
Oh, it's perfect. Um. Anybody else have any comments, questions, thoughts? Desire to make a motion? My move, we accept them as a community. Okay, good. I'll second. Nice. So we do have a motion and a second on the table. Um, last, last questions, comments, anything from the audience? Call for the vote.
Laurel, aye.
Leanna, aye.
Of the aye.
Vicky, aye. Right.
Hey, chief, that is very exciting. People will be joining a full board. Well, almost, yeah, one more, one more to go through. Uh, so our very own Laurel Hill Ward has graciously applied to, to the energy. So very exciting. Um, anybody have any questions or comments regarding Laurel's?
Just a big thank you for being, for sticking around.
Thanks for the motion. Yeah, seeing no questions or comments, I will entertain a motion. I'll make the motion. Okay, thank you, Leanna, for motion. You have a second. I'll second. All right. Then I will call for the vote.
Leanna, aye.
Do I vote for myself or do you understand?
You can do either.
I'll, this is my vote for myself.
Of the aye.
Vicky, aye.
Does that make us a full board? We do now have a full board, which is very. When we got our two. Yes, but we have all of our seats. We've got this, so we may not have a hundred percent attendance. So they have a board. And I believe we all are small parents, maybe not all parents. Um, we are all here. Okay, so that takes us to item four point five. We'll start with item four point five point one, the homeless education policy.
So, um, this is, there are no changes to this and often you have adjustments, changes when you look at policies. This is something that's required for you to review. There's no additional approval process. But we need to bring it to the board to be approved once. With no changes, no changes. Just to be reviewed, I should say, not approved by the board.
Thank you. And that's.
And that one is a. So it's mainly just, it's just by agreement. Yeah, you just have to have reviewed it and we have to have it on the agenda. It's a good thing.
That's good, I read through it and it was, it was a good reminder of what our responsibilities are and our offering. Questions regarding.
I don't know, it's in here, one of the early fifteen homeless. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Fifteen face. It's a state, it's a state. Oh, very excited that we need. It's also how they're counted too, it's a little, it's for children living out of home, like you might have a child. I don't know if you know this, I published it, you do, but if, if a child is, for example, living with grandparents or, you know. And when we, when we noted, it's living out of home, not, maybe not homeless unhoused, you know. So we have a form that you, someone fills out every year that talks about.
Totally.
Yeah, totally. Yeah. Yeah. Anyway, um, and grandparents too. And it asks those questions about housing. And they're things like, are you living with another family? And are you? That sort of thing, so, and that's something I like to talk a lot about to members of the community, because sometimes. Children will be homeless because they've lost a partner, a friend, they don't think of themselves as homeless.
Right.
But yet there are significant services that you get when they're homeless. So that homeless term is kind of. A hard one because people think in streets and that's not what we're talking about. We're talking about people. Yes, they would, but that's not just, just that, but any type of person has housing issues, they can be considered homeless. And then there's tutoring, there's funding for travel.
What's the, you know, trailer parks? Uh, there are different, or a difference maybe to like mobile home versus a trailer park?
I don't know. ECOE. I think probably mobile home, yeah, mobile home versus trailer park.
It's your term homeless according to this document, if you live in a trailer park.
He was asking like. Their, their current shape, the mobile home.
They don't know.
That's what I mean, and if your family lives in that.
You're renting.
Or maybe you own the truck.
Maybe you own a truck.
I just, I got one thing, I was like. Is there a difference between a trailer park and a mobile home park? And if you live in the trailer park permanently, doesn't matter? If your family lives there with you in this shelter.
The only thing I, I would say about that is, is. It's, when we look at that, that's, that's probably a pretty good indication of income level.
Sure.
And, and so they may have broadened it out, um, trying to bring those students who are going to be more risk under the umbrella additional services, you know.
It's just maybe.
I, I live in a trailer. The triple wide history. College trailer.
I believe in, it sure looks like in this sense with this, the way it's written, that they're temporarily staying in a trailer. In an RV situation, that's how I read it, or, or camgraph.
Yeah, it just really.
And words is fixed, regular, you know, fixed to be. Mean that very thing.
Yeah.
So.
I have family that have been living in RV for five years now and they're permanently no meds. And it's, the rest of the world doesn't really write things according to what you're describing.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think it's what you described where the term homeless is kind of writing up. That they, not homeless, but yeah, they maybe need some.
Well, it's even kind of an archaic term.
Maybe they're choosing to live there because they.
I like.
Yeah, and, and it's been supplanted by unhoused, so it just documents a little bit. Relic, you know, really.
And it seems like it's not actually looking to address homeless students who are touching people. Like extremely low.
They just don't want to give the term.
Right, right, which is fine, I, I, all I'm saying is I have a surprise.
It's, again, it's one of those things that comes to us from. When you say language, it comes to us from the state that this is the man that we have, this is the policies in the meeting. Who gets the service, who doesn't? So a lot of times the language comes from body and it's hard to get that body.
Sure.
And sometimes it's not worth asking.
Yeah.
You know, so that I think is some of the language is because. The legislature at some point recognized a special need for students that are homeless and took some time to identify with that. So, yeah, and we'll continue to use the language until it becomes important.
All right, so this is a review item only, are there any other questions before we?
Yep.
Okay.
The parent involvement policy is on there, I should have asked that to be removed from the agenda. Removed.
Yes, item four point five point two, the parent involvement policy, I was going to ask about that because I didn't see it in the packet, but I thought maybe we're.
I'm getting things out of, no, I did not.
That is okay, so we will go ahead.
As we can table that.
Table, item four point five point two, teacher meeting, and then I'll take item four point six. Contracts, starting with four point three point one.
So, four point, we have been working with a few kind of education for a number of years now. And they do our help ads and helps with our Aries and our test. And so we have an ongoing annual review of their contracts. To be approved, we did look at another provider this year, but timing wise and cost wise. Not worth the change.
And I am going to propose that the motion could. Other unless, as we go through them, anybody, unless we go through them, anybody, um, feels like they want to not approve one and not find. Keep going through and please just, um, let us know if there are any questions as students.
So e-therapy, GANIS and ongoing contracts, we work with them for distance. Um, support either in school psychologist or in, um. Counseling services, special ed students, um, that have it in their IEP. Um. We do have a local, um, school psychologist that we'll be using, so this, as far as that goes, will be a backup. Do not use it, but we want to continue with the online.
Is there cost to it if it's, if it's the backup?
It, the cost is only when you.
Yeah, got it.
I'm sorry, did you have more to report?
Yeah.
Okay, I, I know recently Chico State had. Remote, I think it was remote. Oh, and something like that, Chico State had a issue with Texas based remote services company like this. In which they were. I think, it wasn't not like necessarily on the website, but there is such the operating religion based counseling to Chico State. So here we are contracted with another Texas company, which gives me the. Yeah, and I'm just wondering what extent have we tired them?
Um, so this was recommended to us through the elderly themselves. So that is our special education, um, our special education services. Uh, they oversee us and support us, so when we were looking at e-therapy potentials, um. I asked them, I get, I just said to them, very certain types of people, come with us, we'll help you. So, um, that was recommended and used by them, also been used by other charters. The woman that I spoke to in signing up was actually, they really are all over the country as far as that is really not, that. The woman that's doing the, the work, did the work.
Oh, and so we have like one person. Use, it's not just whoever.
No, it is not, they're, they're assigned to us, we work for them and then.
I, uh, do we have, we have a good, who that is?
Good, imagine if we wanted to.
Received reports of.
But, yeah, we haven't. Our comments, we haven't.
In the last, so we've had them in place for a year.
About six months, actually.
Often have we used it versus the last.
We have done about, I'm gonna say about three or four assess, assessments, and then we had one.
Five.
About, it's about, probably, um, it's probably about forty percent of what we did.
Was remote. And that.
And just for some clarification, this isn't just therapy as an counseling service, they all can do, yeah.
It can do, um, the assessment.
Yes.
Yeah, that we have to do psycho, the school psychologists level. All of these.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are we still wondering who a Todd, Tom clean as well?
Um. Um, Emma has no longer been involved with that on the session, so. So I do intend to, um, but I don't currently have the administration on my board. But.
It's very decision when a person, person to remote happens. The, just when a person is not available.
Yes.
Do we always have a prefer?
Yes.
Excellent.
I'm the anchor on this. Let's stop and talk about everything.
No, it's good, it's part of. And that's, well, and the reason that it's so important to have for turnover is because an insurance board doesn't get paid basically while we have higher terms and. When the. And because it does, and the things that we just kind of get used to seeing.
Right.
Um, that allows us to witness, and so it's, it's very important, and that's really important to the board. Please.
Okay.
Yeah.
Slow you down every two.
Yeah, sometimes one person, it's, that's why a good board has multiple perspectives. Again, um, family first, I'll just move forward, um, is the firm that we work on with for, um, behavior. It's for B C B A, behavior intervention, uh, assessment to establishing. They have a behavior as it comes in. It serves the student, works for them and writes a behavior plan. So. We started it last year with, I think, about four students. And so we'll continue when we get to that level of need, of need for more, um, level of. And then, of course, the onsite staff. Assess it, measure it, you're there. Have that outside. Also do, oh yeah, full time. You give yours. Oscar. Yeah, yeah.
Does. Does this information? Go, we go to the IP also?
Yes.
This is all part of the testing of students.
Yes, it is, it can be, behaviors can be used for an IP, can also be used in an online. Last year we only used special ed students, that we might see in time. Use it for, um, non-special.
I'm mad at that contract, I feel like this is hazardous. That manager will put.
Yeah, and it's, I think it, um, it's one of the qualities, just like wood. I think, um. Yes, it is for this act, this Laurel said, we need, we needed four behavior plans, we didn't need one five.
Right.
And so if we fired somebody to do it, they would be split through a number of things for everything, they would focus on behavior if we studied in that process. So for that small school, we have a lot of speech therapists. Um, they're also contracted with their own. Or do we need? Those that, it allows us to have equality people. They work with our public side.
Right.
They work with the staff that are with the student on a regular basis, well, try input and.
As a retired teacher, I really like somebody from the outside observing both the environment, the student, the teacher.
Everything with something like behavior, it's pretty critical that they have. Pretty extensive knowledge, which pays experience, so if you had, even if you had a full. Where they're seeing, as Susan said, for example, for a year, they can actually kind of lack the breadth and. Understand who the students see more, and I'm sure too that they are concerned about feedback and if they weren't doing it. For someone here would say, hey, we're. Not receiving quality.
Just recently, we come acquainted. They're helping fire. And I'm, I'm true.
One of the, um, the other fact perks of it is that then the behavior is so it's a service, but we're. So you get a different, um. Commitment because they're like, say, I want to work, this is my. And so it, and they have that ability to manage their minds, where they're working at school full time, here's the hours you have to. That's what we have to live with and we're fine with it, but we do tend to see that, um, that focused attention. Well, yeah, when they say I'm gonna work, so our, um. Process that we live with, like she worked with, and, you know, and that's the word, you know, so they called us and said, do you need someone? We said, yeah, so, um, it's that sort of. It isn't good for these kind of little pieces of.
Are we ready for a motion?
No, the last one is a school nurse, Natalie Rand is our school nurse, uh, she is actually, um, works for, um, Chico thirty day school. It's, who has her contract through, um, I think over all nine charters. So she has been, um, a critical asset in addressing COVID and addressing, um, vaccine mandates. And, um, she herself is actually moving to Tennessee, but a lot of what she does can be done online. We are going to go with her and continue to use her, um, with some additional, um, support from local, um, people for certain assessments. She has to know, or she will come to do it on our cost. So anyway, so we want to move forward with continuing to use Natalie and with the nurse contract with. This means that there's. Um, there will only be a nurse on campus on.
Which is the thing is. What even would just.
It's healthy.
We have one of those.
We have a health.
Oh.
Person that when your child goes to rescue, your nurse, nurses office, they, they, you call them the nurse.
Yes.
But it's the health.
Nurses.
Yes, and the nurse is the one that, um, that really. Doing the records and ensuring certain testing is done and things like that, whereas like the Band-Aid and the ice packs and the day to day stuff is, is really done by the.
And, and right, anytime there's a, a student with a exceptional health aid on campus, like diabetes or whatever, there, um. There are people on campus, right? To respond to that, respond to. The nurse does the planning of a child has that. Does the plan as part of the five oh four or the IP or the plan? But the implementation of the staff. And it can be a variety, it's healthy for.
It would be, it would be concerning if those nowadays during the pandemic. On an elementary campus.
And I give you one day.
He would be, he would not, somebody would have to do it.
They're a light out of your office.
Yeah, that's right. Good job.
I know how this goes.
Alrighty, are there any other questions regarding any of the contracts? Being done, I will enter in a minute to approve the contract.
I would be approved that.
Certainly.
Thank you, Ryan, for the most. For the question.
Well, I.
Fiona, I. Okay, I. Thank you, Todd.
Fine, fine.
Great, item four point seven, the school lunches plan.
So um. I, I will add in the discussion that the contracts were all viewed by the finance. They were also represented. Um, the school lunch plan, Chico Unified, reached out to us and they've been. Talking to us for a couple of years now about the fact that we contract with them for um, the school lunch program. And um, they are struggling and have been struggling with staffing that department. Um, and so they are looking at contracts, they have school of the charter schools. Um, we of course have the ability, we have a full kitchen. We've done lunch program ourselves before, so they're like. You could do this yourselves, would you like our help in doing that? And so um. So they came up, um, and Maggie and Buck met with them. The other meeting hasn't happened, now that you say that, um, uh. Met with them and they talked about um, having us start to take this over at least. So um. You have the next page, Maggie.
If it's staffing issue. That, I mean. You know. Deploying, deploying now that. Are you gonna be a staff?
We have a staff.
Oh, you have already?
We have a staff member that's totally, it's one of those things that may be a charter school and a flexibility. Government that we offer, makes them more interesting, more um, healthy, or I don't know, I don't know why they struggle. To fund, to fill these positions, but they do. So um. We have staff member and already we have a backup. People in that department. And of course we have Buck. So um.
But has the.
But has no time, no. Um, but. So it uh. Appears doable and um, within the same cost, you don't really have a choice to say no, it's. Kind of saying. We need you to do this, we can't do this for you anymore. But they are doing it in a kind way. They did it sooner, they called them, you know, about October, it's not really big. Meals anymore, you're done this month, so I just really appreciate that this has been a, a pretty. Kind and supportive way to help us transfer in and to continue to use for this time their suppliers. We do at the school, of course, they unpack how the um. Goal of improving that, the lunch program and getting a little bit more away from sugar and. More to help the um. My hope is that we start with the, basically without changes, so. That's not gonna make every parent happy, but we need to learn how to do the lunch program first.
Sorry, you designed a lunch program?
Um, I, I have been attending the CCSA conference, there are the providers there do. Sim, offer fairly simple exchanges, and so if, if we can make those changes, we will start doing it pretty quickly, but. Right now, our um, focus will be to take it over, make sure we have it staffed correctly, access correctly.
I mean, because it is still federal. Program, then in addition to taking the program back, will also be taking that color people work.
Yes, we will.
And all of that.
And they, yeah.
Making our goal there.
So. I know you're incredibly busy and, I mean, I know how stretched. Can be, but. Aren't there grants in some cases for improving the quality of food and adding more? Healthy options, so, and I know that's, I know that's a tall ask, I'm not saying. Well, you should write a grant, you know, but, but it seems like there is additional funding. When people want to um. Improve the quality. It's like, you're smiling.
And so you should write a grant, grant off.
Yeah. So another question I have, Rodney.
Well, to address that, yes, and we have, for example, um. Wrote and worked with Chico Unified on uh, the salad bar, that was a grant. And so we have done those sorts of things. We haven't worked better. So we would have.
Stone Creek. Chico Unified has a salad bar, I don't know if it's a book. Salad bar and some of that. And so.
That's what we do that have French fruit.
How long?
Um, and it's for, well, I use this example so much that irritated, but it's chocolate milk and cinnamon roll for breakfast. I don't think anybody thinks it's healthy, never feed their children that at all. Most of us, um, but that's what is offered on these days, you know, so it's like. And of course, the kids are happy with that, but the seniors aren't. They're over there, energy is like. So, so it's that sort of change, like if we just. Didn't offer, were able to, but I would love it if we could. Offer up something other than house milk. No, as milk.
Yeah.
Something other than um, uh. Beautiful sweet Rollington. Though I love them, I'll be honest with you.
For me, if that changed, if you wrote in Brown.
Yeah.
Everybody would be just as happy, and it's way more on break.
Yes.
And maybe some break. Oh, Ryan. Um, so one of the. First app, I'm not paying for that um. Is like the financial equipment, so for processing the payments and um. It like, I assume that'll be an additional front, I'm guessing Chico Unified isn't. Kind of exactly that's all of their equipment. Um.
They are actually, they're leaving all the equipment in place.
Like to include all of the finance stuff and still be charged for the meal.
They're not going to take any of that away.
Oh, that's good. That'll be preferred for.
Right, all of that. And they also um. They have a back office provider. Who um. All the meal information is entered into and they're all.
Okay, so we won't, so they'll complete the process then in federal?
No, we'll do that, but we're, we're partnering with the company that. That they're partnering with, so basically we have to manage all of our own vendors now. So all of our food vendors, all of the lunch data, we have to enter that. We have to do all of it. Um, but we do have the freedom to. Ask for grants, and so.
What's the cost of that back office?
We're folding it into work that. We're already doing, so we do have. Plans in place to support front office.
Well, no, I see, I.
Data entry.
So there is some like.
But you were saying you're contracting with the same back office provider that's currently being contracted with.
The, the lunch program, lunch program.
I'm just seeing any cost of additional admin labor. Well, that's, that's why I'm asking, is that the back office or is that the additional?
You're asking about the um.
Texas.
You're asking about like.
Contracting with the provider that's currently being contracted with, there's an expense to that. I assume that the additional administrative labor is the. Entering of the data onsite, so if we're contracting with an offsite provider as well. I was just curious as to what the fiscal impact that is, if we're looking at the.
I'm not sure.
Sure if that is um, actually something we pay for, or if that's state based for.
I'm not either.
I'm not sure.
Good question.
Yeah, um, and then also, I know, um. Do we not qualify for the, I'm seeing the dollar now. Not qualified for the free.
No, we do.
We do.
So all students, you know, free.
That requires uh, two. Breakfasts, I guess the top one breakfast cost, the, and the. More defined.
Yes.
From the top one's cost. Um. And that's why. You can do this and maybe uh, top. Things were fun.
Yeah, that's, that's why I was asking that question, like, is this what we're attempting to collect from families, because. Then, you know, obviously there's gonna be some variability in those numbers versus if this is what we're putting as a claim. To the federal nutrition program that they will reimburse that three hundred and sixty four.
This is based on our costs. What Chico Unified's cost to support us this year, this is their, their numbers.
We come up with ten grand at the end of the year extra. That would not think. You don't, you don't get to bank that, you have to spend it on food. Because you're being, your revenue comes from state funding for food. So you have to get back at this.
I don't think so.
I don't think so either, not the way.
I also.
Yeah, you'll buy better food, right?
Yeah, when we actually um. Do that.
So there's still some unknowns.
Yeah, there are some unknowns. However. This is what is being exposed for us, and it's. It is probably our best option, moves in the direction. Uh, it moves us in a direction towards what? Sort of like just forcing our hand, do what we need to do, just for getting around to it, so.
Well, and Ryan, too, if we look at that optional eleven thousand to have. Offering better food, well, like they need the additional cook because we'll have more people as minister. So if they get better, more people from the restaurant, um, and so. You know, there's gonna be some areas that. I assume that at least starting. Uh.
Right?
Yeah.
So.
I was wondering.
You later.
Oh, cool.
I was just, do, this is not an actual.
This is not an actual.
Later on the sheet, somebody had noted that. Oh, right there, right at the key. Lunch numbers are terrible. Didn't know that. It was terrible lunch.
Low.
Low, okay, and it's bad that they're low.
Because the, their standard cost, like having a person has to serve.
Well, because if they serve more, then we have more margin.
Yeah.
Your heart. Hurt.
Are still there.
Are still there, just pay for the residents, pay for the staff.
But you will be funded person.
Right.
For.
So we serve fifteen more. That would be incredible.
This is really in line, there's something that's been on my brain council for seven months. And I think Nicole is. So, but um, is there, I, I know it's very early, but is there any talk about? Rob, grow farms and then distribution. Well, you're not trying to overhaul it right now, just trying to.
First, you have to figure out how to list, let's get our own delivery system working and then.
No work.
No work. So.
Which I think is the smartest route to go, don't kind of seem to leave these things at the same time, then you start to tell which. Component is failing and why, which we all.
Yeah, and this is, I mean, it's a big ask, it's a big take, I'm not taking on for staff to like just do this correctly and not. You know, so we just really want to do that first, at least.
Sure.
With our weekly challenges. Once we know them. That's, and we're grateful, you know, by, for offering to help us learn. And make sure we know.
You want the stuff?
I see something from Nicole. Like grow farm deliveries.
You got it.
Great, thank you for that, Nicole, and I hope you heard that that is something that sounds like will be looked into down the road. Uh, that's interesting. Okay, so that will, if there are no other questions or comments regarding uh, the school lunch plan. Um, we'll go ahead and move into item four point eight, the meeting dates for twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four.
I have a question, Chelsea.
Okay, go ahead, Nicole.
Hi, um, so that lunch. Um, and that lunch program that you guys are wanting to put into effect. Who is that through, or that was just suggested through?
Nicole, just for a point of clarification, um, we, Chico. Longer going to provide our school lunch services, so it's not. Not just a desire, it's a need for us to take that program over, so the decision has been made that to start, um, because. There's a lot of moving parts and pieces and paperwork and things like that, so we'll take the program over as is, which is the numbers you saw on the screen. Those are from Chico Unified, those are our current numbers. With our current food vendors. That. And so we. Take that program, we will implement. Is set and in place and implementing that um, smoothly, then we can start um, then changing the food vendor and the other. You know, looking at the other components. Um, but looking at, starting with kind of this plug and play, so that we can ensure that our staff has ample training and opportunity to uh. To execute it well before we then also change the food on top.
I just don't understand why. There wasn't more notice given in regards to that, so that way we could prepare for this, because this is something that. You know, I personally have been wanting to see in place over the last several years. And that I've been motioning for and trying to do what I can. Um, so I honestly, I feel like. This whole situation with Chico Unified is actually a blessing in disguise, because it forces us to have to have. Other means of doing it, but I do feel that we as parents should have been notified so that if we wanted to do something to come forth to help out. To make. A nice lunch meal program as well, so that way we didn't just have to be handed what, what was ever left over for us. You know, and chosen in advance, then that way we could do that. That was what I was wanting to get across.
Think anybody disagrees with you, it would have been great to have a lot more notice, unfortunately, you know, we didn't have control over that, that was a Chico Unified um. Decision, not ours, um, so we are moving forward in the best way that we can, um, because we do have. A lot of ins and outs to. Um, learn and deal with and ensure we have in place so that we can be federally compliant with the program, and so that's the main focus first. It's to ensure that we are compliant so that we can have a lunch program, and then. Um, I think it's for desire, for meals from Susan Express, it's not only the desire of the parents, it's very much of our knowledge. But also the desire of the board and the staff to have better. Have better food, and so I think that is. Um, the short-term goal is to just get the program started and then very quickly after that, and make.
It'll be a gradual transition. But we're gonna get it started right away. Couple of months.
There are tremendous number of regulations that Blue Oak is going to be. Uh, faced with, and so they need to get that in order before they start making larger changes, but I'm sure they'll ask. And kid input.
For sure, for sure, so this is. Exciting and challenging all at once, so. Alrighty.
Can, can I add something to that, just so that everybody in the audience, everybody here knows, is that. We found out in May. So this isn't something that we've known about for months, it was a shock to us that it happened and. Um, so. You know. Nobody was hiding anything or, you know, delaying notifying uh, families, we're just. Uh, just trying to figure out what to do with that information.
Thank you, Maggie, for that note, I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Alrighty, let's keep moving forward. Uh, let's go to item four point eight, the twenty twenty three. Twenty three, twenty twenty four.
You sure?
Yeah, clearly we are getting late into these things.
Goodbye.
Hi. I just double check the dates again. And then December nineteenth is the week of Christmas, that Sunday, Christmas Eve, throw that out there. And then February nineteenth. The day before that, the twentieth is our week, but February nineteenth is President's Day. So for what it's worth. Those were the two that really kind of felt really close to a travel day or a day off or a holiday or the December and the February. For that, right, right? I believe it is. Put it on my paper.
Nineteenth? No, we we'd go up until the twenty second this year.
Chico Unified or?
Here, Blue Oak.
I think our, I think our founder, Greg Macher.
Yep.
I think I could. But December nineteenth is the week of Christmas, Tuesday, Christmas.
I suppose so, let me just. I, if that feels too close, I I'm a mean that we change it. Let's let's believe it, if, you know, if.
I think one thing to be mindful of though is the number twenty eighth has been adjusted later. So if you move December's meeting sooner than you're having essentially that. Um, around. I just see the twenty second. And then the February. Yeah, there is the twelve thing. Administration, not really working.
I, it, you know, we have the the rhythm of the Tuesday, um, parent council, finance committee. Um, and then for the charter council, that date, the second Tuesday is often really hard for our um, support charter impact to get us finance. So is it, so we're always worried about moving this meeting up a week that we might not have.
From February.
Right, that's the same problem. Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's.
Just for what it's worth, I was supposed to the two dates, but if it seems like they still work. If everyone's.
Jack out on holidays and everything that's. And so maybe just leave it as is.
That's the end of the discussion. Does anybody else have any questions or comments on the meeting date? Then I will go ahead and follow up with the motion to approve the EOC meeting date. Leanna for the motion, we have a second. One second. Thank you. From I. Leanna, hi. Uh, Chelsea abstaining. We are.
Brandon.
Item four point nine, the guidance on removal of instruction for instructional material.
Um, this was a letter from the State Supreme Court of Construction of basically addressing what is going on and what our legal responsibilities are to that, there's nothing to prove it. Um, it's just wanting to affirm that the board is aware of requirements.
This kind of kind of go. I guess it does not suggest students' right to be discriminated. But then it's discriminatory material works on current.
Good question. Uh, does anybody have any questions or comments regarding this item? Saying in item ten, item four point ten, the school budget for three three.
Hey. I believe Jim is here, yes, he is. Jim, it's up to you. Finance.
Hi, everyone. Um, so we have the approval of the forecast budget for next year. You can see built on, uh, how how should we say, a achievable, a achievable enrollment of two sixty two. As much as we'd like to move towards three hundred. Uh, it's good to see a budget that's successful at the two sixty two level. And ADA assumption of roughly two forty four. So those are all realistic numbers. Um, obviously, as we go into actualization, those will be the critical driver for the revenue, kind of what we've talked about all this year. At those levels, it's about two point nine and state per pupil. The other grants are kind of the usual, there's a hundred and twenty six carryover. We talk in the presentations about how much one time funding has been used and how much can be stretched.
Jim, I apologize, can I apologize that you're you're, the clarity of your speaking is kind of waxing and waning.
Okay. Try to speak closer. So you can see. Can you see on the federal, there's a hundred and twenty six in federal?
That's better, that's better.
That's the last year of this, so that's the presumption as of the outlook for this year is that a hundred and twenty six would remain. So that could move, but it's unlikely to move based on where we are at the end of this year, that there would be any more than that. Um. Other sources are all pretty typical. What what is changing in the outlook for the budget that it'll take some, it'll take some review next year is the expansion of extended day and the the ability to start in the community schools program. Those are two new expansive grants. And then additionally, you just went through the food program. So if the food program grows, you could have, you could have expense growth that would be fully covered by revenue growth. And so that's budget neutral, but it will make it different, like looking year to year. We won't want to look at gross expenses or gross revenue year to year because we're going to have all new categories included in your budget now. So we still have to present the school as a whole. Um, but it's going to take a little more work to take that and try to kind of set aside the new additions and say, what is the returning program look like? So you can see this budget is over four million. I would be, you know, waving hands and making a big scene if a two sixty two ADA had a four point two million dollar uh, expenses because that wouldn't, that wouldn't support itself. But that four point two is because of the inclusion of extended day in community schools. Um, they brought in their own revenue to expand them. So basically balanced at this level, you can see this is the maximum amount of expense the budget could take on at that assumption of two sixty two. Non-comp, not a lot of area to move. You know, you basically have the existing amount of non compensation expenses you would expect to see. So the best gain opportunity for the school would be if that ADA revenue could come in better than that at that operating level. We'll stop there.
Have any question or comment on the budget?
The previous slide one up here, it's a code is fifty eight eleven, management. You know what that is?
It's charter impact.
Yeah, that's our backup.
Oh.
I'll do.
Business service.
Council, CPA. Trump, Trump, you know, all of that reporting. Oh, five. Four, it's state more fires.
Any other questions?
I've got that at the end page.
I think.
Is there more? No, no, sorry.
I think he said we'll stop there.
Got you.
If there's more for me.
I think that's it, um.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's the next one.
Right, oh, maybe I. I'm on page seven. Am I way past budget? Okay.
Yeah.
Nine seventy one.
Okay, no, I haven't.
Okay, I would. Those who are going to be looking at this this year, I mean, it is a pretty tight budget margin and so I would really encourage you to really withhold any, if you're spending any part of the season, keep your, keep your eyes on the budget this year. But we'll be, hey, sorry. In.
Good thing.
Going forward, uh, EDA. It's like, Jim said, and Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's not like they said they projected it at a two sixty two enrollment and a two forty three EDA, which is where we've been instead of like, so instead of projecting it closer to three hundred, which then would give us a lot more room in our budget than they, I'm I'm grateful for that to build it for our realistic enrollment. Um, and then we can do the work and try to increase pot instead of write the budget for higher enrollment and then hopefully get it. So I appreciate that, even though. Make sure we're tight. Like, but it's a lot more real.
That, um, this slightly down pointer right now, school fund rate basis, but is that very tidy, sixty thousand dollars, even number piece? And what is fundraising?
Um, time, a money goes into either the general fund that from our parents or um, or um. That includes all of the classroom funds.
Okay. It was sixty three. That's way too nice.
I. I have a question, yes.
Yeah, what's that number?
The sixteen thousand for fundraising.
Uh, just local, local contributions to the school?
I think he was just wondering why it's like this perfectly round number where the, where we drew that from.
Yeah, those are usually, those are usually just set at a, an estimate based on experience. And then it's 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 truly a one year budget, but you would, you look out two years to show the authorizer that the school is still stable for two more years, although you're not actually adopting, right, the future of your budget. And then the numbers get a little funny, you go out a couple of years because they'll, they'll self adjust to the number of students. So if we have something, you know, a little more undetermined, like fundraising or contributions, we'll just set it to, you know, this is about what the school does, set it to the next round number. Um, and then the next year out says, oh, you have twelve more students, so it adjusts it by a slightly different number. Um, but it's just doing the automatic growth.
Okay, man. But it is based something on what on historical. And we do actually see in our accounting that as student number increases, fundraising increases, like they're actually correlated?
I mean, I would say it's immaterial, really, you know, I I understand the question, but it was just a carryover of what the school is experiencing. Um. It could go zero, but but it is already at, the budget's already at zero, so I wouldn't knock any revenue off.
So like you're talking about for those out years, how it automatically adjusts the additional student?
Yeah, like is that?
I think that's just part of the funding formula, so next year likely you'll look at the budget for each year, even though we're looking at a two year budget, each year you'll keep that years of it. So this is like something that just kind of shows what the potential would look like in the out years. I mean, we also don't know for sure what the actions are based on what we think the increases are going to be and, you know, what we think funding is going to be. Um, so those are kind of just all formulas based on historical data. Whereas next year, when those numbers are a little more solid, when we have a better idea of, you know, what our student body looks like size wise, but like you know, in my experience, the answer is yes, somewhat, because when you have more students, any student that contributes into their um, classroom fund for their field trip, for example, when you ask all the families to contribute if they can, um. That all is included in that number. And so that is part of the fundraising numbers, so yes, if you have more students and you're asking more families to contribute, we would see some classrooms from that number.
It makes logical, I just wondered if if we would have. Sounds like the answer to the engine on air.
Yeah.
It's such a tight budget and they're going like, well, usually.
It's very hard, there's also one time funding here. Where that like we can't, we hope that they come, they come and not push the budget. It's like, we don't know what the governor's going to say. They're going to come, we don't know what the poll interest is going to be next year. So really, beyond, or the the out years, so next year we have a pretty good idea, pretty sound idea. Um, and then, but then that's what we're going to revise. Um, you know, the governor doesn't may revise, then we revise our budget reporting when they say, you know, when those just continue. And so that's a hard thing, you know, it's like, and that's a big group of why we employ a back office because this is all they do is live and eat and breathe in the full finance and understanding that's the better.
Yeah.
So the June budget is fine. The June budget is just that, fine. October is when we get.
Oh.
It's when you go, uh-oh, or yay.
Well, yeah, yeah, I think I'm freaked out by that one column or that one row because I'm the tenth helpful treasurer. And I go, we don't do anything here. We need to do that. And and if there was a fundraising goal, this, I've never heard. So like I, that's a surprising line.
And it feels weird because that's not just the current account that's all.
That's all the classrooms too.
Yeah, all of the.
School wide.
Any fundraising.
Any parents that step up and donate.
Yeah. It all goes into there, you have to have a place for that revenue. And then those expenses don't just come out in one line. Those expenses are then expense, you know, based on the.
Platform we use. Credit card.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So it's all of, yeah, so this is where it comes in, it's out.
Right.
On all those.
As long as it's, you all feel like, yeah, that's what we usually do.
It's. Yeah, you know, yeah. Any other question? So budget, any, were there any comments or concerns from the finance? Good, really hoping that. I'm sure I'll hear about it. I know. All right, well, this is exciting. Uh, I will entertain a motion to approve the budget for twenty three to four. I knew that we improved the school budget. Unset. Call the board. Laurel, the board. Piana, aye? Okay, I. Vicki, aye? Yeah, plan for twenty-three, twenty-four, Sam?
Yeah, I can, can I, can I say sharing, Maggie?
Can you give it to him, Michelle?
Sure. I don't count that, you're right.
Is it okay if I take sharing?
Yes, sorry, Jim, I'm.
No, that's, I, I got it in late.
Oh.
So.
Uh, where are the? Okay.
Can, can you all see the EPA statement?
Yep. Yep.
So this is. So this is actually part of the budget, um, EPA is just part of the per pupil funding you receive?
All right, Jim. Sorry.
How you putting it on?
I'm trying to get. Trying to get my cursor where it's supposed to go.
To the left.
Okay, thank you. There it is, all right.
Grab the top bar and, uh, drag it to the right. Right.
Yeah. Why is it not? Okay, I'm not.
It's like in a funny mode.
Yeah, I know. Okay, awkward, awkward, Ellen.
Yeah.
The ten, right?
Yeah.
There you go.
All right, all right, Jim. You've got it.
So, so the EPA is just part of the per pupil funding that was included in the budget, but when that funding increased. They attached a rule that they wanted the board to publicly disclose how that, how that additional per pupil would be funded. Um. The estimate at budget time is that it would be seven hundred and sixty-one thousand of your per pupil, but that. There's a complicated formula that has to do with state revenue of how much will actually be funded through that source. But, but this is a proportion, a portion of your per pupil. And the number one expense the school has is, uh, certificated salaries and benefits. So the most direct use to authorize, to show that the funds were used as intended. Is to say thank you for the additional per pupil, and we approve utilizing it towards, uh, certificated staff.
We're going to be questioning. EPA then. Do we need to approve this plan? Okay, I wasn't sure if it was approved in the budget. All right. There are none from the board? Then I, for motion to approve the.
I think they removed them all, sorry.
Anybody like to? Yeah, I moved them. Thank you, Laurel, for the motion. Okay. I say. All right, thank you, Laurel, for the motion, thank you for the second, I will call the board. For Laurel, aye? Piana, aye? Vicki, aye?
Brian, aye?
Great, now let's face it into instructional minutes.
There you go.
Really? It's pretty odd. Uh. We can see you.
Now, I think you have to share your screen, you can.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Right, the other. Seven. Right. Right, listen. No, just, just if it's there, it's free, not the.
I'm really not good at this, I'm sorry, you guys, I apologize. I need more practice.
Yeah, bottom middle.
Don't put your head.
Bottom middle.
Ah, bottom middle, yay.
Every time you underscore, maybe you'll have to.
Yeah.
Gotcha. Right, okay.
There we go. All right.
You guys are so nice, thank you.
So instructional minutes worksheet, um, once we establish the under, the next step is to ensure that we have the right number of instructional minutes. For grade level, and as you can see, there are. Different amounts required for each grade level, so, um, that, this is the worksheet that I use to establish to sure that we have. Enough minutes, um, to earn our A to A. Um, you'll see this, the bottom line, of course, is the number of days, thirty-seven-six this year. Changed from a hundred and seventy-seven because of our change. The, um, November, um, parent teacher conference days, um. We're still pretty close, I did make. I, I like to bring you up that over-under line, so we're all over in all areas. And what that does is, and by assuring, um, we're a little bit over, is that if there's a reason for an emergency close of the school. We don't have to go back and add another day or add these days, so, um, that takes us at least two days. Um, if we needed to close the school. I'm in.
It snowed yesterday in Florida, wasn't it? There's a lot of.
Oh, I saw that spring.
Want to figure out what the purpose was before we said we'd create one. Or do we have to? An additional reason?
Yeah, that sounds about right.
It's great sense, I was like, how is that, you look so different, when there are the exact same hours. Maybe else, then stop, can we come to a question? Make it. Yes. We.
Fine, so, yeah. So, yeah, I do do your.
Does anybody have any questions on the instructional minutes?
No.
If you guys are ready, I will go ahead and, um, call for motion.
Go ahead, we agree.
I said.
We'll call for the votes. Roll, aye? Piana, aye?
L cap? The L cap public hearing. So we need to record that if it's like open. So this is the L cap, we're in year two of three, so there wasn't, um, a lot of change, um, in it. Um, we're basically implementing visibility, um, the L cap cap that was approved, um, in the past. Um, the, this, this is the projected revenue funding sources, the first couple of pages are. Intended to be more, uh, a simpler expression of it, um, for, um, parents, so.
So they give you, this is kind of a people.
They, yeah.
Oh, great.
This is a temporary, just fill, fill a lot in, um, so go back up, because there's a point, because I'm like. So this one shows the significant difference between our budgeted general fund expenditures. And our total budgeted expenditures, and you have significantly dropped one hundred thousand. Um, in the language below, Jeff has explained, but a lot of that, even though we still spent money, we didn't spend it out of the general fund. And so that's, um, a summary of what that explanation is. Those conference services, that was like, hey, services went up, how did I spend my spending, but it's because it didn't come out.
That one, it means when you talk to me about, about the half million. That was just. Did that just mean they didn't, but.
Right.
Oh, isn't it? Oh.
Yeah, so like, see how it says, we plan to spend four million, out of that four million, thirty-six hundred is tied to, or part of the L. And then five hundred. What's an example?
Oh, what's that other hat?
That, that is, um, primarily the, um, COVID.
The other half million is.
Yeah.
Oh. Sorry about.
Yeah, so essentially, essentially, um, what happens is this, in the L cap, they only report the money that's spent. Um, of, from our L cap fundings.
Right.
We get funding sources from lots of things, and so potentially, we just kind of take and go, hey, well, all of these expenses qualify for L cap funding. Um, we may have other expenses that qualify to be spent in your other funding, and so we just ensure that we can realize all of them. And so, this kind of, are challenging, because it's kind of super accurate representation, but it's still required for the army.
So one of the things that this came, um, since Governor Brown last, he was, came. Governor Brown was all about the L cap and all money, the inputs and the local.
Uh-huh.
Um, the current legislature, and Governor thought was a more focused on. Filling us how we need to spend, like, so they're still giving us a lot of money.
Yeah.
But they're not, it's not reflecting as much of the L cap, because they're doing the E log or the COVID money or the other reports. So.
It's almost back to more categorical than.
Pretty, it's the kind of the direction we're going, that legislature likes to.
Yeah.
Say, we are starting a preschool program, so this money that we're giving you. So they're doing more of that. Than was.
The balance of budget in L cap, it's a, it is the. Is that? What, what do you mean?
Yeah, you know, my kind of big.
Well, I mean, isn't that what that kind of reads as?
See. Here, but what he said. Anywhere else?
Oh, it's the little.
Right under, like, the blue, and then. Right above, right above the big title.
Explicitly state half million that is spent by. Yes.
Budget expense is not.
Just above the hole.
Okay, so that's a separate line. The budget expenses that are not included in the L cap, is, it's following, that's what you're trying to like?
Yeah, yeah, you're saying those two sentences.
Not directly, one is, yeah, so.
Well, two hundred and twelve thousand in administrative salaries, and two hundred and thirty-eight thousand in clerical and office salaries.
Oh, so that is.
That's what we just, because I haven't said, and that is the number of classes, specifically student salary, but it is all the. That being, like, yeah, support staff, the business people.
With our direct, so. As opposed to, um, staff that are directly, um.
So like, one of those.
Students, yeah. Oh, directly working, direct services, students or aides, and I think. Um, administrative, in this case.
Is like small and the general.
Yeah.
Okay.
It seems like a really high number, but.
It's a bunch of.
Oh, yeah, I'm saying, we consider over two million dollars.
Yeah. Why, uh, it was so much less expensive to provide this. And much, uh, we need it as much as we thought.
You know, it's just so dense, I would actually just tend. Difference between budget and actual expenses.
Were there fewer?
Kind of, have the following.
Fewer high needs students? Awesome, too, nice.
Both are the fact of me. Um, good. But maintaining expanded services. Um, leveled by supporting actions with other federal and state counties, including L C F. So. We had a decline in the separate mountain cost.
Uh-huh.
Um, and so we maintained the service. By including other L C F.
Okay.
Actually, we actually spent over the budget of the amount, I'd say, three thousand. Not where this gets spooky to look at, because it looks like we spent.
Like, great job.
But that's that category.
Uh.
And that's that category, and they only gave us not much, spend on the services that we had, one point seven, who we budgeted for. Two things, not paying for them, out of this pot of money, so we, you know. Now, it's tricky when you look at the total budgeted expenditures for the entire budget, and only the funding source from one.
Yeah. And again, you have to remember the budget was written in June, and reality check, but.
No.
So, I'm, I'm really getting used to that, it's, the last couple of years have been so good.
And so for you, Ryan, that's important to know, is. Right here, so, at the year, our budget has dropped, or increased, basically, since, whereas. And I know they're working on some things, but. The schools are coming, they have a lot more budget stability, we can probably don't see somebody saying.
Maybe. And. That over, so I can see it says hour map.
Yeah.
Yeah. Wait, that, that's, uh, for all schools too. I mean, I, I know it's critical, and current look is acting. In their, you know, their very best effort on that, but boy, that's a huge thing, you know. It, it, basically, in a number of these things, um. Whole education system got worse, and probably everything was definitely.
Yeah.
There's a, there's a piece that we'll talk about at some point, of, of additional support needed, basically, very, they're. Uh, almost all this, you know, in that.
Yeah. And the schizophrenia. The schizophrenia of it is like, uh, the Methodist church in Rose, and the Christian church running up. They did vacation Bible school, all these people looking, the principal, they had, in little tiny roads, they kind of burn kids, you know, it's like. Might not get them to school, but, all right, we're going to get them somewhere in the summer. We need to bring it with us, and. Crazy, yeah.
If you have a break during school.
Yeah.
They didn't get a break during the school year.
Yeah. Thank you. Um, are there any other?
As we, I did add to action, I don't remember where it's going down, Meg. Oh, so this is just telling us what we, what we did, the progress that we made.
Round to the. Uh, representing.
Really interesting, with the changes of the state. Um, and then get, get the. Nation of the L cap in the form of local control and individualized, but, uh, it's just about, yeah.
Yes, and now we're.
Interesting, what these things, you're taking our people away with this thing.
Yeah. You're in control.
Hey, we still have control of this money.
Yeah.
Have other money, but, yeah, it's.
Except for because it's a turnhole, it's not, you can't throw this money, but you can't send it.
Okay, these are two things that I added, um. Based on input. Um, one was, and the metrics is how we measure, the baseline is how we start. So this will not have anything in year one or two, will show up this year. So the first one was a discussion of the need to focus on, um, strengthening our higher levels, the support for higher level students, so extension. Um, that was the first one, and the second was, um. That was not very well written, so what did I mean by that? That was not very well written, so what did I mean by that?
Phew, data collection.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, so in, in increasing focus on collecting data. And establishing practices, schoolwide, that are, work well for all faculty and all staff. Example, we, with our new special ed team that came in this year, they established a way to collect data from the teachers that was. Negotiated, discussed, and better suited, was more, the teachers were more able to implement it. And felt more comfortable with what they were being asked to do. So, so he's saying things like, no, you don't have to tell us every grade you ever get a student special education. The sample or do it for a week, those sorts of questions. What does that really mean? Those are things that we worked on and need to continue to implement and implement processes that are sustained.
Some data that I would really like to see, and it'd be, I mean, any good data is a challenge, but. I think a really distinguishing characteristic of this school is the emphasis on. Using your hands and creating things of value and things of real meaning. And it'd be interesting to major parents, you know, it's. Like data on parents' sense of their child's kind of self-efficacy and capability and the child's sense of self. And then look at them after they've done, and to me, I, I won't go into the story, but I've seen it really in my own teaching. It's their sense of self-confidence and their self-confidence grows when they, they actually have skills, observable skills and theories. Anyway, this is the five. But I saw you right there.
I did.
That first one wasn't held out, so.
Yes, and I would probably say something like, see. Almost like seeing your baby. Change, I'm continuing. This is the specifics. This comes from Jim. And the coding that's done by Maggie and lack office providers have pulled and put into these. Yeah, so where all the summaries is done, how to do it. Next year's gonna be the big, we finished this, next year's gonna be the big year. So we finished this one and we start. I can do that one. So. We do need to, and I know Alex has reached out, we do need to have a second meeting. We can't approve it at the same meeting we presented.
Yeah.
So that would be before, if we get a sense before we leave tonight, oh, when it links, this group can attend another meeting. Morning, afternoon, evening, doesn't matter.
Because we need it before. They were all six.
What did you say, they?
They were all at six P M. For the summer date survey.
Oh. Thirteen.
First two. And they were all at six P M. Thursday, tomorrow, after this, P M, Thursday, it's P M, Monday, it's P M, Tuesday, Wednesday.
Susan, will you be here on the twenty-sixth?
I will not be here on the twenty-sixth. You don't need me to be.
Okay.
I can do it.
Yes, only board members have to physically be there.
Okay.
Are you requesting Monday to be here? It's, you available, nothing?
I'm available. But.
A short meeting, but will be a one, one agenda item. So not, not any.
Do we need the twenty-sixth for meeting notice for, is this a?
No, we need, we would need, actually, officially, Monday, because it's a special meeting.
So we can have them the twenty-second. How about the twenty-second? Get it over Thursday? Yeah.
March the sixth.
Could we do it at? Oh, you know, will, will we have a forum?
The twenty-second?
Yes.
Yeah.
By the clock? What about the Monday?
Well, I mean, let's see if we have a forum. Are you, you're available on Thursday? I could be available. Right, but I think that gives us a forum, right, even with.
No, we're.
Okay, so let's say, do we, or do we want to say five o'clock? Or does that work with people still?
I could, I could make five o'clock.
I could make time. I would rather have. Six, okay, six. Yeah, six is great. Okay.
Talking about probably.
It's like.
Yeah.
At lunch.
Okay, six.
Yes, three of the driving.
Six. Great, so.
So we, we can't approve that without the.
No, you cannot approve it unless.
Starting today, so what we make, our agenda gets out so that we can hold our meeting on Thursday while we have a forum.
We have to get it out by tomorrow six. That's our goal, okay.
Right, this is community agenda. All right. Right, so there's nothing else on the LCAP, I will go ahead and close the public hearing and do. Thanks, that's been sent by our executive director.
For still being here and focused, I'm excited that Maggie was able to scan in my item. My first thing though is to let this through, Ryan, you are a parent and parent. And I enjoyed working with him in the parent council and I know. Most of what I have to report, I've done actual additional items, so I've had my, our staffing, our. Certificate staff is complete and full at this point, inclusive counselor, Spanish teacher, and a lovely secretary. Will. All three will be happy at school. And then we are still looking to replacing two aid positions. You're particularly looking for those who are capable of doing middle school math. So that's a little bit more of a challenge, but we have added that in. West, for example. And then the summer goals, summer hero staff is continuing to work, completing the tasks starting next year, I think. Two of our staff were in looking at cleaning up the storage room today to try to make more, more organized space, so those are the things. Summer school is scheduled from July thirty-first to August eleventh. Currently have about twenty signed up. We've had some changes in the credentialed staff, people that have been able to do it, so we will be, we are working on developing that. But it's still a go. And that is part of the extended learning. Really didn't talk about those really good net. And then other items, we have the audit is in progress right now. All right, one of our usual June things, as you talked about early carpet cleaning, it is underway. Our Williams visit is scheduled for September thirteenth, everyone, or September twelfth, everybody will get more information on that in the future. I will be attending the Selfa Leadership Academy in July. And then we also, same week, we have a team in the MTSS. Also in July.
Special education board.
Yes, special education. That's my general stuff. And then we can move on, unless you have any questions?
Do you have any questions?
Reorganization of all this stuff. And, and I, I work, this is one thing that I covered and discussed also with the finance committee. So we, pretty completely, so just for, just as being in management for a number of years. When you have people move on, it's often a good time to look at the overall structure and see if there are changes you want to make. So we have had some changes, and so we have the following considerations listed up here. That have happened for the last two years for our community. So the changes we have, we implemented this year is that I took over oversight of special education directly. That felt really important to me, and I have actually discussed it with an MTSS coordinator and others. That as we move into more of a universal design learning, where we're expected to have the special education students in the general classroom. More effectively, that having two different departments was, isn't a good plan. And so putting those two together so that we can have. I can be in a room with a general education and special education teacher, and especially those plans has been a significant improvement in really our goal setting for this year. So feeling I really want to continue doing that instead of going back to separate departments. So Amanda, who is our assistant director. I've asked her to continue this year, to continue focus on the attendance behavior and some other items that, of the expanded reading. That she's started to do this year. That increased focus, as you mentioned, Laurel, on how we really address and focus on that chronic absenteeism. Luke has had a problem with chronic absenteeism for at least a decade. And it's, of course, gotten worse along with your friends' spouses, but it doesn't give focus and attention and relationship. And so that's really a big part of what Amanda's doing, is working really on that relationship building. Say, hey, now what can we do? Why are you, what, what can we do to help them come to school? And if we really just aren't committed to going to school, then we have to. So.
And in many ways, that's more of a principal type role. Directing those families, trying to bring that community together.
And she's the assistant principal of the bus.
Yeah, I'm just.
And that will free up a lot of person, like, give you more time then to do more of those.
Right.
Functions, like the district function.
And that's what you, boards have asked me, that really focuses on some of that more superintendent level work. So it does help me get out of the day to day, and it's not easy for me, but to get out of the day to day and allow. To be that, it's really talking to kids and talking to parents. So, and so far, she's been here since standing, we've worked really well, so felt to work as well, so we want to continue with that. The thing that we're realizing more and more too is the importance of having somebody who really understands human resources. Maggie completed her degree in that a couple of years ago, and so it's started to take more and more of that on. And so moving her into that executive position and making some adjustments so that the. Human resources pieces in one place, right now it's split between executives and the HR and the business office. Putting that and then allowing us to recruit somebody who's just that numbers detail person. You know, that can take care of the. Checking where the computers are and doing all the numbers to do payroll. And so that feels like a good, starts a long-term plan for the school, that we have one person that's really focused on all the numbers in detail. And one person that's much more focused on the nuances of human resources and office management. And an office manager position was actually recommended for this school back when the, the, a previous board did a review of. The way that the office ran, and that's the person to make sure all the important places are covered during the day. And so adding that to position of, of executive assistant, again, was always the intent, the, the executive assistant at the time refused to do it. And if you remember K Holmes, you would, you know, that that would be something to do. And so it, it has just sort of not had, we haven't had an office manager. It does fit well with that executive system. Then said, the business office's system, more responsibility for tech support and inventory, as well as continuing budget work. Elimination of the wellness department position, and this was probably the most controversial piece in the finance committee. Because the wellness coordinator has done a lot of behavior planning for that sort of thing and being that. But two things make me feel confident in this. Number one, Amanda, as our assistant director, has. Years of experience in a variety of districts throughout the United States. And actually teaching in a classroom. So whereas the wellness coordinator position that we have is not. Position, so being able to have somebody who can work with teachers as another teacher and having that experience seemed really positive. The other thing we are looking at or have posed is that Kelly Chandler, who's currently full-time on the front desk. Would start the day on the front desk and then move off of front desk so she can do some of the behavior, individual behavior supports. Hey, you know, can you, we need another person on the playground, a student who's left the classroom, that's almost where we're going, when you find them. Those sorts of things, so she'd be able to do that work. And we're giving her some training in check-in, check-out, and some of the other aspects of behavior. She, of course, works as the front office person who works regularly with behavior. So it's not like a new thing, it's kind of the front office. So it's not like a new thing, it's kind of, the front office is the first gate, so she's already working. And so it's just moves her position. Um, and then, um, establishing a new position that will really work and fo- focusing on volunteer, um, supporting volunteers, behavior, social media. And I've added to that since sort of this data collection. So, um, and this position will be supported at least in part by our CCSP agreement. Later, because it is really, the CCSP is really about, um, uh, relationship building, um, data tracking, things like, so it's, it will be a good support position for that grant. Yes.
I have a request. Please. Slap on it. Board voice when you call and it just people, it gives me an impression of a. It, it verbal, and I'd so much rather hear your voice or Maggie's or somebody that's brighter and energized. And then just another comment, I always worry, I, I always have a bitter impression of any, this is me and. There may be a lot of disagreement, but something about getting a human on the phone more often than not. I mean, I, I would redouble efforts to have a person answer the phone. It gives such a different impression of an organization. And, and I would think, what if I were calling to tell you, I just see that person headed into the school again. Now, of course, I would call 911 first, but I, I always, it bothers me when the school doesn't have a front end on it. Where somebody answers, personally, just knowing, it's always about recruitment of other, I, of other parents and such, so. So I request the recording to change and I would be hopeful, you know, I know it's difficult, could be a person on the. More. I speak to you. Do you agree?
Was that the next one you moved second?
Please listen to it, Ryan.
Oh, no, I've called this one for sure.
No, I don't think it's the afternoon, I think it's the guy that, he's actually the. Guy that set up for fun.
See, that's why you come back, so he's probably a lovely laid back person.
I assure you, as the former director, we.
Okay.
I assure you that that not would not affect. Um, however. Um, yeah.
And those. So, so that focus, it's a focus on communication, on social media, on data, not just, um. Having gone, and I'll talk about CTO, I've been coming to that conferences last week. And realizing really what it's about, um, that engaging the community. Um, the wellness room has been staffed primarily by, um. No, by, um, uh, interns from the college. So, um, I've ordered each staff and gotten these, but, but reaching out again to the, um, the department.
Okay, the only test.
We will attempt to keep it open.
And then, sorry, what is the, um, you need to focus on? Uh, not the changes, but I remember this topic.
On technology use.
Yeah, what does that mean?
Um, it's really about the, um, organization of technology. Have, have technology, nowhere dead. Who's using it?
Which room, the card is in?
Yeah, or, yeah, so that sort of was like, oh, this one needs to be fixed. Oh, and there's only 18 minutes, get that out of the way, all of that. I did give you a post, um, in your paper stuff.
I need a main made of on here. Everyone else. We are still Maggie.
Love Maggie.
What is?
Is the executives?
I mean, that's what I was asking.
So, one end's only way to call Maggie.
I promise I'll get better at it.
We don't want to.
Ryan's gonna help me.
I love her too.
It's a unique individual. You know, another unique.
Yeah.
Oh, boy.
Hey, do we have the, um, report for? Okay, extended learning, this is got again, this was a discussion in the finance committee. Um, and this is the schedule that we're intending of, of what the extended learning requires is 30 additional days beyond our school days of. Of, of offering to care for children. And then it also requires a nine hour day of care. Wouldn't have to be by the same person or at school level, but it does. So this is the plan, um, for the days we would be available. They're already talking about maybe some adjustments or changes to remove your spring break requirement, um, by contracting, um, with others. Amanda's taking this on, she has lots of ideas about how this service, other than let's just have another person here at school doing this, so, um. We are looking at possible changes. Um, I am holding to summer school and to the conference and in-service dates because those are the days. President's weekend, Friday, we have it off, we continue to have a four, four, um. Uh, four day weekend, whereas Chico Unified has two, three day weekend. So that's where President's Weekend Friday is on there, because it is not a day after this. So I did that, um, to compare.
That's nice because that means that card won't be serviced.
Right. So we will do that and then, um, like I said, the spring break and also the WOW camp are still somewhat, um, maybe somewhat flexible. But that idea of having two weeks of, um, and we're talking and moving the staff and, and, um, some families, the two week, uh, summer school in July and August in a camp. It's just a little bit more fun and, you know, seems like a good, it's a break. The June break from the hard work of education and just something that is painting and. Hitting and, and that's a.
And might, you might put the honeybee discovery center, because there were 700 kids, but we did it for $5 a student. And the honeybee, they themed their program on bees and pollinators, but it's, we brought in a pretty robust program. Part retired. And all this week.
Um, so that, and then the second half, the actual costs is, or the estimated costs, um, which do some of the. And that's our extended learning schedule. Any questions on that? Um, then the final thing is the, um, California Community, um, School, um, partnership grants. And, um, this, I, I, as I said, I went to conference last Friday, not what I wanted to be doing. Like, I don't want to go to government. But I, on a Friday, but, um, it was, I learned a lot about what the intent of, um, the funding is. And, um, the staffing that will need for it and the work that will be done. And this to me is, is work that clearly grew up needs to. But, um, it's. So I gave you of the many pages and programs that gave us. Um, I gave you, um, in your, at your table, um, the overarching values that they shared with us. So value one is racial, racially just relationships. Um, shared power. Classroom, community connection and. So, um, so I just decided to give you this, this is what the basis that they, that with the grants, um, we need to be doing. And so what I'm looking at in the last day, two days, if I go back from that. I think, for example, at our task force and whether, for, for DEI and whether or not it's time to change that up and put that under this, this partnership. Um, and so in doing that, we would, I would look at hiring a coordinator requirement. Who would have, who would also serve some of the standards of DEI. Library, so they would be somebody that would be focusing significantly on race and. It was interesting to me, this is the first conference I've been to, that all of the, all of the presenters except one, like this superintendent. Um, superintendent wasn't able to be there, the state, um, are, were BIPOC. And they were talking about the issues of race, um, in the education.
Were what?
Talking about the issues of race.
I just.
BIPOC, um, uh.
Did you?
Yeah.
Yeah, I was.
Yeah. Black, we did, this people.
Students, um, the, yeah, the speakers were bad and, and, um, so they're talking about it's time to maintain this, we need to make good race, races. And, um, so it, so basically it came to me like, we just need this part, we've already, I've already talked to a number of, I mean, two organizations that have a. Like the little city coordinate, and we're like, yeah, that's great, they're not going to be able to afford that. That blue, well, we can, if we put it into this position, I guess, that we can do that. And then they can help us work on how to engage the community the way. Instead of having, what are we trying to do from our perspective, they could really engage, um, the community. It talks, the, one of the other pages that our presentations talks about the, you know, going from where we are now to true integration. And, um, the tokenism that sometimes can happen in unified and how to get past that tokenism. Actually, um, people of color, so, um, a lot of good information, a lot of the work being done right now. So I'm really excited that we've got that, that suggests, um, what we want to address, what we're trying to address with this.
Companies being not implemented yet and keeping it at a size for sale?
Not to a knowledge. They also got grants for four of their schools, this grant, so I know that they will. Um, shared power is really about, um, how decisions are made. And really assuring that, that. Decisions are made and implemented from the community and getting away from the hierarchical structure, which we've been talking about and working on for number of years. We've been progressing, but I feel like we still haven't focused on it. Um, classroom to community matters, we talked about streaming and other things. And then that value of, we're always reviewing how we're doing morals. So those are just the core values of it, um, the details of. How to hire and how to fund it and all that are more complicated than we wanted. Into the other 40 pages that we could go into, and that I will be posting more on this and continue. And working on hiring staff. The, um, the front office, the new front office person, I see being a big part of helping.
Rachel. Susan. Please pursue the non-her report. During then, that'll take us to closed session. Susan. Okay, and so. Our. Bass, and, and the report out from our closed session, uh, is the, the board approved the conditions of student one suspension or expulsion. And, um, dividing as a vote. And then that's on the side of seven, the next meeting is scheduled currently for Tuesday, July 18th at 3:00 PM. Although I do believe, wasn't that one of those, um, forums? And, and in short, there's a change on that, uh, and with that, we adjourn at 9:11.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Yeah, sorry, somebody else was talking while you were talking, so I can't, couldn't hear what your report out was.
Freddie, I will report again, as the board approved the conditions of student one, the suspension or expulsion.
Thank you.
Thanks for checking, alrighty, and then that's it. So, um, thank you and have a good evening.